You're good.
I was work session to order Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty four, twenty two six. This is the work session for personnel policy updates. These two. Please call all.
Yes, your mayor Pion.
President.
Councilmember Ringo. Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Councilmember Brian.
Here.
Councilmember Flatwell.
Here.
Jeffrey Johnson.
Here.
Project manager Genevieve Hirschbeck.
Here.
And your city administrator Scott Laners present.
Thank you. The motion approved the agenda. Motion the second. The other. Maybe that allows a favor. Think about it, say, all right.
All right.
All right. Don't you care? All right, so. Considering on page two, we got to. Brown page, depending on which iteration of the page we start with either that.
I'm gonna see just a second. I think I'm missing it for.
No.
No. Well, I thought we are, but. Just with my camera, not the. Oh.
Are we live?
Yeah.
We were live, it's on the long camera. All right, so. Pick up where we left off, there was a. At our transition point, we were in. With the numbering system. Two point. Three. Three. Item number four, actually number three, I had a question. On where we left off last time. And it had to do with. Selection process. And I brought a point that I didn't seem here, I want to make sure that what I communicated. Was understood and if that's what the council agrees to, but selection process will be a cooperative effort. But this is two, three, three, item three. Between the city administrator and the personnel committee or the city council designees. Our staff may bring recommendations for candidates, the city council is responsible for the final hiring decision and must prove how high is the city employment. And the clarification I was hoping to have in here was. If the personnel committee is unanimous on the final candidate. That candidate would be brought forth to the council. But if there's a split between the personnel committee, one for one candidate and one for the other candidate. If both those finalists would be brought to the council or the final interview also would decide. Is that what the council understands that process to be?
That's what I understand to be, yes.
The yes from Mary, the yes from Channing, is that correct?
So the personnel committee couldn't make that decision.
Yeah, so so in case we asked, we had. The two people on the first one coming split, one wanted candidate A, one one candidate B, I recommend that.
We bring it to the council for.
So we bring it to the council, we bring both candidates to the council. Let the council decision. Do we have a council?
So the council.
Would they re-interview?
Right now.
What's that?
Would the council have to re-interview candidate?
They would do the final interview. So they would, they would. They would get to sit down with the questions or news about questions and they would then make the decision. So is that consistent with what the council was thinking?
Yeah.
So if that's the case, Jenny, could you? Add that accordingly?
Um.
Understood?
This is what I captured. If the personnel committee is in agreement on candidate, they will bring that candidate to the city council for a vote. If the personnel committee is split, both candidates would be brought to the city council, the city council would complete the final.
And that being the personnel committee being two council members assigned. So I'll take recommendations of staff, they aren't voting. All right. And then I had one question in. Four of that same section. And it says for background checks, all finalists for employment with the city would be subject to background check to confirm information. That's first sentence, last sentence says a finalist is an applicant who has been selected to have an interview. With the city, city administrator, city council. So I thought it was just the. Last line was so. We have to define finalists. People might be interviewed. That are actually finalists and we've always tried to protect them in case they're working somewhere else. So. Could I ask that the Genevieve research what that what that legally is for finals? Because those personal assets seem to disappear. Or seem to have conflict.
To clarify, at what?
At what point?
Potential employee is has a background check?
Yeah. When when they're considered finalists?
Or is that just why would it, why they should be the other way, it's like.
Yeah.
Selected candidates would be. Approved pending a background check. Ever verbiage versus we wouldn't do three or four finalists, it's like whoever we select is going to get a job pending the background check.
So should this final sentence, a finalist is an applicant who has an interview, because that makes it sound like anybody who's interviewing has a background.
Who would do that?
So remove this.
Remove the final sentence. And and to Councilmember Alders' point, to say that. Recommendations are based on passing and successfully passing background, yeah.
Selected candidates are pending pending a will be awarded pending a background checker, how long does the background check take?
Other than a half.
Yeah.
So we select and so on somebody.
And there is data, Mr. Mayor.
How's my ring?
There is data practices that dictates when. A candidate who has applied for position in interview in a governmental agency, when that name then can be public, prior to that, those names are not public.
So so I would like that to be clear in this too, because I know that was the case. I'm going through interviews and if they weren't the in the final. Selection, you can't reduce them.
Yep.
Same thing I would be telling administrator when they do that. And then one more thing on the credit check, the next, you had right down. Said certain positions due to nature, their responsibilities may require the city to conduct a credit check. If a position warrants credit check, the city will obtain necessary authorization. Comply with Fair Credit Rating Act. Can we get a definition of? If a position needs a warrant, warrants a credit check. Or certain positions due to their nature. What does the league say those positions are? Because this is a lot of ifs and mai's and it doesn't know positions defined. So we could ask. Your suggestion on that?
So clarify which positions would require that one.
Yeah. All right, is that where we left off? Did Scott have a background check?
Yes.
In Mabry?
I did.
In here?
Right.
I'll try to, did Joe?
Next.
Thirty two years, I'm just saying.
Do we need to add Chuck to the league, it's like the seat, the city administrator and our.
I'm gonna say anybody who has a finance.
Finance.
I would think, but it's like, just because, like, just because Joe has an expense card, doesn't necessarily mean he's gonna get a background check. It's like, can we, it's like, it's those two positions, so can we just say those are the two positions that we're gonna do a credit check on and we move on?
Um, there's no other requirement, I thought this was the correct, it might be just those that. And finances.
I I believe the league is gonna say, you make that decision, everything is different.
Yeah.
I I agree with Councilmember Alders that it would be our most prominent person and then the person that has. Our accounting system and a checkbook.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah. So one of the things that we talked about previously is just making sure that this is foolproof for the future, so I think. Because our current employees already have it, it would just be good to name those positions.
That that I'm fine with that, I'm just saying, like, if we're naming the positions, it's those two positions, I don't see a spot where we would say our. Just because we give an expense card to some of our power routine numbers, we would. I don't see that as being a credit check position, it's like those are the two positions that are going to be credit check positions and we're on.
Okay.
All right, so where are we at then? Did we stop the pregnant medical exams or did we?
We did pending two other items, so the most recent one that went out is. A draft of how the final policy will look, anything in gray was added per last meeting's decisions. Um, there are a couple of comments that. I added, so you haven't seen this verbiage, but I added it because of last sessions. Decisions, for example, I added the link to the data classifications as we discussed. There was a section where we need to clarify paid on call firefighters and that is pending the paid on call firefighter handbook. So that section isn't final because depending on what the paid on call firefighter handbook says, it could go back and change it, but otherwise everything. In gray is how the policy will look for these first sections and then yes, we left off on medical exams, which is. Section eight. Wow. Four of section.
Two, three, three, so page thirteen of the policy.
So in our last work session, we had discussed the medical card requirements for DOT drivers. I did additional research on medical. Cards for DOT drivers, they are not required for every DOT driver, every DOT driver does have to fill out a certification that says. What kind of driver they are, where they drive, what kind of vehicle they drive, do they have passengers, do they have existing other conditions and. They fall into one of four categories and then that category determines if they need a medical card or not, so it's not. As simple as everybody does or everybody doesn't, so. The medical exam requirements for a driver specifically are handled by the federal DOT and and now then really wouldn't be involved in that in any way. In order to get their CDL license, they'd have to do the medical exam or get the waiver through the DOT. Knowing that, um, I couldn't think of any other position that now then has that would potentially require a medical exam, so. This section can be removed altogether, knowing that if a DOT driver needs a medical exam, it's handled at a federal level.
It falls underneath this, he has to be current on the C D L.
Yeah. Which is checked in a few other ways. So if there are other positions that would require a medical exam, this section could be left, if there aren't any, then it could be removed.
Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
I I can't think of any other one, so I would say, um. Remove it.
And again, I should, sorry, caveat, if the paid on call firefighter doesn't address medical in some way, then potentially revisit it, but. This would be under the assumption that firefighters are handled, so.
Good thing. I'll go.
So then our next. Section is going to be drug alcohol test, we did already remove pre-employment drug and alcohol testing for all candidates. And so now the drug and alcohol testing that we're going to be discussing in this section is pre-employment only. Um, in a later section, section eight or nine, I believe, is when we will talk about. Non-pre-employment testing, so this is just. Pre-employment, so the verbiage here is taken from the league's verbiage on DOT specific drug and alcohol testing. Which is a separate policy, so the only thing that's going to be in the personnel policy is now then has a separate policy called drug and alcohol testing for commercial drivers. Please reference that. And so what's? What I would have to review next is that policy and what's required to have that separate clause. Any questions or concerns on the verbiage essentially saying. DOT. Um, employees.
Uh, let's see now. I was basically saying if somebody is is transferred and promoted within. Before they can be driving. And the equipment they have to have a test.
Yes, and drug only. For pre-employment or transferred sessions to the going job.
So we're keeping that. Will be required to take a drug test prior to the first time the driver performs a safety, safety sensitive function for the city. What does that mean?
So if I am already an employee of the city, but I get my CDL and I'm gonna go drive the the snow cloud. Before I can do that, I have to pass. The DOT and then this city's requirements for drug testing or. Having a C D L.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm all right now.
To Councilmember Alders, so really then the safety sensitive is not relevant, it's just. To perform a duty related to holding C D L.
There, there are very specific safety sensitive functions, so you could hold a C D L within the city, but as long as you're not using it. For a safety sensitive function, which in in now then's case would essentially be driving the trucks that are beyond the limit. You wouldn't have to have passed a drug test, you could just be an employee, but before you step into that vehicle, you have to have.
I I don't know, the definition for safety sensitive, yeah, I we need to be careful that because if somebody jumps on the skid steer and they're. Under the influence or reasonable suspicion. And hurt somebody, you could easily say driving a skid steer loading a dump truck is a safety sensitive function, so. I want to be pretty, we have to be fairly clear that. If they, if we promote somebody and it requires a C D L function, they are going to get a drug test, but the C D L function. Requires them from a DOT standpoint to get the drug test anyway, right?
No, so just holding your C D L doesn't. Mean that you have to have a drug test, the drug tests are essentially tied to your employer. Um, and then they're reported to the federal databases, but just to hold a C D L, if you're not employed. If you're not using that C D L through an employer, there isn't separate testing.
So, but I'm just. Devil's advocate here, every vehicle we have is more than a one-time truck. And they're commercial vehicles, so. Doesn't every employee have to have a C D L to drive even that one time? Are you sure?
We, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but, um.
Commercial vehicle one time.
Yeah.
My understanding is something. Commercial vehicle one time should require a C D L because we got rid of all of our one-time pickups that worked and went to three quarter tons, so people would have to have C D L. Just saying, so.
He's a C D L, you're asking?
I'm. It could be different because it's a municipal, but at work, we got rid of our one-time pickups and went to three quarter tons because people like engineers did not have C D Ls and were driving our one-time pickup around. So.
I think that was true, I know that our stuff, the whole idea, when we back then, there were. When we were.
I mean, it's.
With the small trucks.
It's easy to say if it's a, if it's a pile truck.
Yeah.
And you're, but like you're F four fifty. I'm. I I would almost think, is there any position, if you're an hourly employee, that wouldn't require a C D L, and I'm, I'm not sure that we could say no.
So Jason, to your, your point on the. You know, the, the. I'm getting the skid steer and bucket loader and. Those mandatory piece of equipment, they would be C D L.
They wouldn't require a C D L, but they're, I mean, it's. It's a sentence, it's, yeah, like, if someone got hurt and they chose to. Say they were doing it on the ballpark and somebody got hurt as they were loading. A skid steer or something and the person was under the influence or had reasonable suspension suspicion, it's like. I wouldn't sit on that sentence saying, well, that's not a safety since the role, meaning it's a driving law, it's a safety since the role, if somebody gets hurt, right?
Mr. Mayor.
I mean.
So this, the safety sensitive is coming from the DOT, that's their federally defined requirements, these are what they define as their federally, uh, their requirements. Um, it has to do with the gross weight of the vehicle, if there's more than sixteen passengers or the materials, so this is. From. The DOT themselves on that they classify as safety sensitive, so safety sensitive is a little confusing because it sounds like anything to do with safety. This testing is only for candidates that do have a C D L. When we get into section nine, we're going to talk about all employees and what drug and alcohol testing is legally allowed, federally allowed, um. Allowed by the state and they are very, very different, there are different requirements on when you can, how you can and what the the rules are for a non-DOT employee.
That would be all of our dump trucks, but not our. Snow clouds, our small dump. Small cloud.
I agree that as we're talking about picture. You know, one twenty-six thousand of them.
Yeah. Because it's a G D W on the big trucks, I was like, did you say twenty-seven?
Hey, I was just thinking that sent you going off.
I printed it and forgot it on.
Twenty, twenty-seven, fifty-one loaded and maybe with the.
Off.
Right.
It's gonna track. That's over, it's the back. And you have the one time then we can ask on the seatbelt. That.
And so were you pulling anything with those one tons?
Maybe one chip or one some along with them.
Skid steer with a trailer on it?
Excuse me?
Skid steer with a trailer on it?
Yeah, no. Let's get this turned out, but we do have a trailer, we had it in there once in a while.
Hey, you, let's look at it separately, but I just, at a commercial level, I'm. I would think that you would need a C D L with the one thing that I got. But that's, I don't want to sidetrack the thing. Probably a question on it.
The one time you put all the our equipment on it. Go see a hallway there, any idea?
I don't, that was that, you made that a software device.
But it's full of sand and salt and all the blades on it.
Hmm.
Yeah, so that one needs more research.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Jay.
For purposes of this discussion. Can we just call it C D L and then we'll define what the C D L requirements are later, but. Um, for the rest of this policy, just have it be the understanding that whatever falls into the federal qualifications for C D L. This would be.
Council, okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes. Please know the one.
So then we're gonna go to the second packet, if you still have it from, I don't remember what was sent out this time or if you still have it from the.
Oh, we have, we have pages. Through twenty-two that was sent out for this meeting.
Okay.
And we still have our package from last time.
If you have the package from last time, this would be the separate package for.
Oh, the. Commercial. DOT drug and alcohol testing?
Yes. That was thirty.
Maybe fifty-six and ninety-five of that.
So I have the little summary at the, um, the first page is just my summarizing of data that I reviewed. Um, just so that everybody knows where it came from, the majority, the majority of it is from the league's drug and alcohol testing tool. So they have specifically gathered information from. The state, from federal requirements, from DOT requirements, and then put it together in a large document. That summarizes what the requirements are for cities. Uh, the first thing to know.
Is the extent of that large document? Or is there more than this?
This, the first two pages are a summary of their like sixty-some pages and then everything else is in addition to it. So this is their. This is their toolkit, so it's sixty pages and it just explains everything you've ever needed to know about drug and alcohol testing. Um, I just wanted to pull out some highlights so people didn't need to review all sixty pages. Um, drug and alcohol testing is required for all commercial C D L drivers, again, we're not talking about non-commercial C D L drivers, I do have a whole other summary section. On on that that we'll get to in a future session. Um, so this is just highlights of what is required for this kind of test. Supervisors of DOT employees are required to participate in mandatory training, we touched base on that, I think, earlier. Um, the types of testing that are required are pre-employment, drug only, random, reasonable suspicion, post-accident, return to duty and follow-up testing, so all of those do need to. Um, be available, obviously, post-accident and reasonable suspicion are only as needed. The city must name a designated employee representative, this is the person that's going to interact with the drug testing, so they're going to be the ones who, if there is reasonable suspicion. Or if they're doing random testing, it's going to be coordinated with the employee to say, you require a drug testing now, here's how we're going to do it. Choose a third-party administrator, that's just a third party that's going to do the actual drug and alcohol testing. The league has a list of recommend, not recommended, um. They're very clear, see, not recommended, available drug and alcohol testing companies here in the state. Um, unfortunately, they left a seven, nine, I think of those five of them are no longer in business or. Um, aren't accurate anymore, so when I read back to them, they said, thanks so much, we need to update that, I haven't gotten a new list yet, but. Uh, but we do, their city does have to choose where this testing is. Um, complete a three-year drug and alcohol pre-employment check for any non-F M C S A employers, so if you are a federally federally regulated employer. Drug and alcohol testing is sent to the DOT and it's readily available for you to go and check, so if I'm a new employee here, I've had my C D L. With a different city for six years, my pre-employment records are going to be held at a federal level, so you can go and check. If I was doing C D L driving for somebody that doesn't report in, it's not going to be on that federal list, so you do have the option to. Contact my former employer to see if I have any drug and alcohol test failures. Um.
So just to clarify on that, so three-year drug and alcohol pre-employment for any non-F M C S A, what's F M C S A?
Hmm.
Federally mandated.
Yes, I will get the definition.
We are, are we? F M C S A?
Yes, so we now then would be required to. If they do any drug and alcohol testing, send those results in to that federal list and and report it there.
If, oh, record us to do that.
If there is testing done and there are results back, those results go to that.
When you say now then as part of F M C S A, what triggers us to be part of it?
Um, I believe it's because we're, um. I won't.
Federal motor carriers. Federal motor carrier safety administration.
I'd be my educated guess. The league, the league says Minnesota cities qualify or fall into that category, but I will find out more. Um, complete a pre-employment full query of the clearinghouse. So the clearinghouse is. Is what I was mentioning there, previous records are reported in. So if you're hiring. A new person, you can just go check that clearinghouse. All of the records will be there. Um, it would be if there's an employer that didn't report it to the clearinghouse, that we could go clear that employer for separately. Complete a annual clearinghouse. So. You, there's the, again, the clearinghouse has all the reports. So you do it at pre-employment. Yes, but then every year you check again to make sure that there aren't any. Reports on the clearing list. And then retain drug and alcohol test results securely with controlled access. So there are. Specific requirements for the test result, how they are maintained, who can access them. That's all. Part of this packet at the end. Knowing all of the above information, there are several. Now then specific documents that. Uh, need to, that are required. The first is the drug and alcohol testing for commercial drivers policy. So that's the overall. Policy that's referenced in the personnel policy specific to drug and alcohol testing. All of these are in the packet. I'm just going to go through them high level here of what they are and what the actual forms are. Um, the drug and screening consent form before you can complete any drug and alcohol screening or. Pull somebody's records from the clearinghouse, they have to consent. So these are forms that have to be unfiled, that have to be signed. By an applicant or employee before. Testing can be completed. The next five all have to do with testing itself. So if there is. Cause of reasonable suspicion, this is the form that has to be filled out. It. It's very detailed, what was observed, how it was observed to um. Document why you're doing reasonable suspicion testing. And then results. So anytime a test is done. A positive or negative result will come back and then these are the forms. That need to be given to the employer with their test.
Does the league offer reasonable suspicion suspicion training?
I don't know.
The, I don't know if the league does, but I believe it's the the D O T does specifically. And so they do have a mandatory, that's what the hundred and twenty hours mandatory training is what. How to observe, what to look for, how to recognize. I'll double check that that does sound like a lot. Oh, sorry, a minute.
I want to have two hours, that's all right.
Yes, yes. I think it's an hour of drug and an hour of alcohol. Minutes. And then the last thing to note are random testing. Random testing is required when there are two or more C D L drivers in a testing pool. It is quarterly. It is fifty percent of the pool for drug and ten percent of the pool for alcohol.
Three people are going to be here every year.
Well, I'm talking to one of them.
It's random by quarter, but it's mandatory for the year.
So we have one public works individual running into that with a C D L. And I understand, I know he's been wrong, he's been in the county pool. And that's how they make those numbers work because it's part of the county. So. You know, but but. The other individual we have. Doesn't have, or one of them doesn't have a C D L yet, and the other one is never a part of that. Then carry him out, probably just carry the C D.
Same to you. Should we look at how if there's a possibility of getting into a larger pool versus just having to do it. Is that believable?
How close are we in figuring getting the C D L?
Uh, we talked about a week ago and he's working on it, but. I'm getting all, he's trying to figure out how much of it does he have to do with what he already has and they're making credit for some stuff. They're cashing off, but. They gave me deadline on his anniversary day.
Yeah.
Needed stress.
I think he's gonna. I think when you check into it, I think he's going to need a drive along something that's commercially.
That means our others don't follow drivers, we have to get in, we may lose stuff.
Yeah.
That means your city administrator on this policy.
So I will research.
Seasonal employee. My my bench at our seasonal employee will do that. You want to suggest to them. He's driving a one ton.
See, oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, is this just federal with the one ton thing? Because it appears if we stay interstate, we're not necessarily subject to federal regulations.
That's been my research as well. I think it absolutely needs to be clarified. Um, but. From. What I've seen it is the is. Are the definitions specifically. And I I will state, I don't know how much a one ton actually weighs. I doubt it's. A ton, but if it doesn't fall into these. Weights, then from everything that I've researched and what has been provided by the league is it will not require. So, um, I will get clarification on that and then definitely research. If the pool can be larger than just.
Yes.
I just got the definition. So it's uh, you don't need a C D L because it's under twenty six thousand pounds. Needs to be a D O T number and a health card and a fire extinguisher and triangles. And nothing wrong with the vehicle. And or the trailer abides by D O T rules and regular license, anything over ten thousand pounds, single or haul a truck into.
Where's that from?
Yeah. Because.
He just got taken.
He let you go get a C D L.
Anybody pulling the bobcat to get? We got it right at the weigh station. Okay, cool.
All right, so the next several pages are the policy itself. This is um. Essentially verbatim from the league with the exception of adding now then's name and. Um, very minimal specifics to now then, but this just explains. When, where, how, why drug and alcohol testing is completed. And one thing I just did want to mention is there is no annual drug and alcohol testing. It's just at pre-employment, which is what the random is. Trying to. To. Keep checking people. Um, otherwise there there isn't a follow unless there is an accident or reasonable suspicion. So the only required. Um, so this again just clarifies. When you're on a safety sensitive mission, that's time that you're waiting to drive. So if you're. On call, but it hasn't started snowing yet. Then that's considered safety sensitive and um. You would be subject to.
So go go back. So. Obviously, any time that controls the commercial vehicle, number three there. Waiting to be dispatched. Inspecting service air conditioning and commercial motor vehicle. While you're unloading.
So those would be times where you, an employee, could not be impaired. So if someone is visually. Impaired during these times, then reasonable suspicion. Good thought.
Cat, and this is separate from our other drug and alcohol policies.
Yes. Right. Uh, quick question on the. That that first page where we talked about the form, the city employee and applicant notification drug screening. Do they delete provided copy that? Is that a document we had to create or?
The league has templates, um. Some of them. There was a lot of feedback provided to the league on the quality of their templates, which they graciously accepted and said that they will modify. For some of my recommendations, but they did have templates. That have all been modified. They are clear in this document. So all of those recommended forms. Um, I think were printed out, but they're in this pack, so.
Are you still on talking terms with the league?
So far, they really liked it. They've been, this is great. We'll get that updated. Thanks for pointing out these seventeen things. So, yeah, so far. They still. The suggestion.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if we need to go through this in detail. It just explains. All the requirements, what post accident is, if there is random, um. It it needs to be right away. You can't tell someone you've been suffering for a random drug test and four hours later that day. They go to drug testing. Random means it needs to be tested as soon as feasible. Um. And then again. What suspicion is. Return to duty. It just goes through everything related to.
So again, go back to the chart there and type of accident involved. Oh, my chart summarizes post accident testing we conducted. So human fatality. The first box says yes and no. Citation issued to the D O T covered C D L driver.
So the first one is yes, a citation was issued to the driver. Then you must ask the employee. If they were not cited, you still must.
So whether this person just says there's a, there's a citation in that, second one says you still performed a test and lessons. Okay, uh.
So is this a box we made or this is a deal? This is what the federal government is? It's just the box.
This most likely is federal government. This is league provided. All of everything the league has provided does have. Um, citations of where they got it. And I think almost all of it. In this section is from the federal.
So back to Councilman Brian talking about intrastate versus interstate. But. Can we check and see if we're not now? We don't get our fire truck, we're going to be going out of state. We go pick up something, but otherwise we generally, our drivers never go out of state. So it doesn't matter if we're keeping everything within. Our community and its neighboring confines over going out of state.
It does, it does matter significantly if you cross state lines. Uh, for the fed, that's where the medical part comes into play. The requirements are different if you cross state lines or not. Um. I haven't seen anything as far as when a license. Well, no, that could potentially be as well as when a license is required, but. Um, I think everything here is based on not crossing straight state lines. On a regular basis because it's designed for cities where we're doing. Soap pounding and roadways.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I was very.
Well, that's, Mr. Laner is going to say something.
Was it, did in councilman Brian say if it's intrastate, it doesn't require the federal guidelines?
Correct. Anything operating within the state, they need to abide by the state equivalent motor carriers, state guidelines, whatever.
Apply to our folks and we're talking about federal guidelines. We may be talking about things that are.
Right.
However, Mr. Mayor. We do go get the fire truck or if we find a pile truck. An I O R or something or a piece of equipment somewhere else that we're bringing back.
But would necessarily be everyone with a C D L going after it.
So that you're saying you got that from the league then?
No, I was just looking at a. Alphabet.
Having the C S A. Were you going to ask me something?
No, that's what, yeah, I just, you had started to say something like.
I I think we still leave the open action there. Scott is checking out this. We we need definite, we need definite, yes or no, we like that. A one-ton duly pickup has a gross vehicle rating of more than ten thousand pounds. So depending on how we like, and we just need to know what the definition of it is, it's yes or no, so.
And you said in your work, and you guys wanted three quarter tons for this specific.
We s. We specifically, we specifically did a while back because. A three-quarter ton pickup has a gross combined vehicle rating of like eight thousand pounds. So, but that's maybe. It's, it may be different.
Yeah, I wrote a bunch of notes when you were saying that, I didn't, I didn't know where where I previously came from. We were driving larger trucks and that without C D Ls, even following that. But I don't know if they had an exemption.
Exactly, exactly. And like Hannah said, is the. Intrastate is federal versus. Or did the state, does the state of Minnesota say, hey, we're going to replicate federal, whatever, you just don't know.
Well, that's what I thought I heard you say there, that the the state version of the federal.
Something you're just saying, if you're not crossing state lines, then then you wouldn't be included in the federal when you were applied by state, right?
Which which may.
May replicate. May just mimic federal and to make it easy on the states to. Okay.
The rest of the policy just again goes into more. Specifics on testing. It gets very detailed into one of the testing failure. Um, kind of tests are allowed. Um.
If we go back to the. Reasonable suspicion, because that was a question we had last time is. The the regulations on reasonable suspicion. Again, a train, and it's one thing to get the doctrine where we never had it before. What kind of training are they going to have to do to make sure? This is a two-hour training you were talking about.
There's two-hour training that at least two people need to take because when we do reasonable suspicion, you need to have. In our case, it's two supervisors would. Interview that team member that has reasonable suspicion so that you have a. Point to counterpoint. Um, and the training, it's literally is two hours and it's signs that. Signs of what to look for, what questions you can and can't ask, and then. How you. How you would go about like next steps. I mean, that's what the training is.
Yes, and I would assume it's the same training.
Yeah, I'm sure sure it is.
The standard training.
Yeah. So it's Scott and Natalie.
So I think at the last meeting, we said city administrator, clerk, and then one other employee. Of the city administrator, so she and I saw that there were three people trained. Um, or it would also be anybody who supervises, so there's a. City work, a public work supervisor would be required to take it as well.
Yeah, we talked about. Sheriff's Department training.
We also discussed when we can use a fire department also.
So I wasn't going to go through line by line throughout that policy, but it does, it is. Very detailed. Again, it's coming directly from the league and they do document where they all got their information. Um, whether it's federal slate or other ones, it does also have its own definitions. At the end, and then it does need to be. Um, signed by. Uh, this one doesn't have to be signed specifically. But it would be part of the personnel policy. That is satisfied. That is satisfied. So then the consent form, also they sign, it says, I, I received, I understand the drug and alcohol policy and I consent to. Comply with system. They can also refuse to sign with them, right? Um, and then that would. If there are applicants, that would prevent them from becoming an employee.
And lose their license for violation in their personal vehicles.
CDL.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So the lot of content is lower than.
So the next one is, um. Just a release of information thing that they agreed that we can pull records from the previous. Drug and alcohol testing and. Their refusal of testing, anything else that's been reported. By previous employers to the DOT. Then the next document is the reasonable suspicion record of observed behavior. Which would be filled out. Most likely by the city administrator and then, um, recommends what they exert. And then I think it is signed by two. Different. Then the next two were just the test results noted for future needs. So. You had a test, your swolly results are. And in the case of a positive result, the hook sets will be.
So the standard, who goes results could send to us when only two?
Uh, the positive have to be hand delivered to the employee. Um.
Employee or who's requesting the test?
Uh. So the test results would come back from the testing.
Facility.
Facility to the city administrator and then hand over to the employee. Yeah, so that's, yeah, so all the testing off would be committed to the city administrator. And then the city administrator would be. Handing out what the test results.
And who has to be notified? The board. Administrator, the doctor, administrator, tester.
I believe it's reported. By. Um. I'll double check.
Let's push.
Who re, who reports it into the federal clearinghouse? Does the city do that or does the drug testing? Do that. I would. I believe it's the drug testing facility because they know that we're doing it for CDL purposes. Because they have separate testing facilities for CDL purposes versus non, but I will.
Yes, point oh four.
On, um.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Ray.
Page eighty-seven, I don't know, um, ninety-five. Just specified. On. The response, I'll say it's the responsibility in the city. Do it for them, yes.
City only takes test results according to the federal's most. The city will report the following information to the clearinghouse within three business days.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's point oh four.
Okay.
Yeah, they have choices. Question, again. Links and all that stuff from the sheets.
So the test results letters. Then the technical last document is just what the. Record keeping requirements are. Specifically for. Drug and alcohol testing. And then I don't think this is part of what was printed, because I was hoping we haven't updated this, but. This, we also do have the list of. Drug and alcohol testing committees. That are.
Mayor. Scott. One of the other things, just from a tool side of standpoint, kind of from the council would be. What is our take? Let's just say something like this, what perhaps? Typically, you could take one of two ways. Anybody comes back with a positive, they're terminated or. They get one. Rehabilitation opportunity to be able to be agreeability, to go through treatment, go through whatever and come back, um. Maybe tonight's not the night to talk about that. It might be something we want to talk about, though. What do we? What kind of standpoint do we want to take from a council or, or a city standpoint? If for any reason we need to have it happen.
Mr. Mayor.
Jenny.
That's a good point. I. I think it does need to be stated in the policy itself. What the, what happens if there is a positive result. I. Will go through and look at what the league has in the model document, but I think to your point, it. It does need to be clarified well.
I think you gotta follow state guidelines because there's a second chance.
At least.
Yeah.
Then I think you have to participate in rehabilitation too.
There is a whole section on, um, substance abuse professionals, how to find one, how to go through counseling, that's what the retesting is. Or after you've completed the required program, testing again. Um. So that is all. In here. Um, but I don't know if it clarifies. Second chance, I mean, for more than one.
So we would, I mean. City would follow the state guidelines for.
You can only complete counseling or treatment for evidence. I have a draw from a telegram with a few in the program. You have the subject determination by same party. While completion of counseling and review of the notice of progress, city requires you to. Submit to or return to duty testing. Your test results will be required. Negative control, so if you receive a follow-up. City will be getting termination.
Right.
Also says we can keep electronic records, but we also have to keep for DOT purposes, paper records. Which just keeps them from having to go through electronic files apparently. This will be one of those that we're going to all that time, we'd have to know, we'd have to keep paper records.
So. Besides the. Several takeaways clarifying one time, when a CDL is needed. The, the Minnesota state requirements are. More lenient than the federal requirement. In researching if now then's random testing can be part of a larger pool. Any other questions on this policy or the associated forms?
So it's.
Again, your commercial CDL for all trucks, get loader, front end loaders, how they categorize. How truck CDLs, um. One-time truck CDLs, do we need it? And I wrote it out to myself to get the weight of the five fifty and will the pound solve for you request? Or a question? That's all I have.
Anything else from council? And follow up on? All right, now.
No.
So at this point, this will all be new to us, like you're saying.
This whole policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two people, CDLs. One of them's in the county pool for drug testing. I haven't seen anything I follow or ever done any drug testing for either one of those folks.
So the question would be, is if they're in the county pool, what record do we have to keep? If they're being tested by the county, do we actually have our own copy of those records?
I gotta figure out the whole process. I just found that out recently when they were discussing this other thing, probably worth something. So you carry a different CDL. And you do, when do you get drug tested? When do you sit in the pool with the county? That'll seem to be them being. Tested is what we understood.
Cause does that person have to be tested for their, their own business as well?
Uh, he carries a, literally they're for a higher CDL level than we carry here at the city. He carries a higher CD level because of his personal business.
And does he actually do the same testing? For that CDL?
Testing as far as well.
All right, now he's in the drug testing for the county pool.
He carried, what he carried on top of what we carry here at the city is a medical card. We don't, we don't have anybody that carries a medical card. Required by the city. He carries a medical card, which is above and beyond what we do here at the city because it was personal.
Does that county pool testing he does for drug? Does that cover both business, both us and his other business?
I don't, it's a. It's a private business, so he has his own sole contractor, so he wouldn't. Do a random drug test on himself, so. And I'd be curious to see how that. The town pools works because it's like. Is there a database for that? I mean, how? That seems odd to me that accounts that.
To take it into, I can see them taking somebody from another municipality in. But. Yeah, I mean, I can see that more than, yeah, more than just individual. Yeah.
Yeah, we usually, they do their end and work, they guys are on fifty-time trains and they always test a people in the office. They know it's random, she tested a guy three times and that guy, mine, was playing. Over everybody's head, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Random is random.
I agree.
There are a lot of. Cannot be a base for, cannot be made for.
If you're like the employee that like basically is not running.
Yeah.
I've always thought that, yeah.
Right, let's go on.
Okay, so we have several takeaways. So next we are going to page. Fifteen of the policy, so this is. Um. Of the newest one that was handed out. It's right before section four. Two dash thirty dash six. Relatives's appointment and placement. Um, just had a question. There's something in the policy that says no city employee may be appointed to the same department as spouse, any member or relative. Is this still an after segment or should this be?
Mr. Mayor.
Back.
So I know that there was a request for me to work with Mr. Lukey. I will have to follow him. He has been to write the information. He was going to work on this part of the policy to change some, some verbiage. Um. But I, I can tell you the conversation that I had with him was that if an employee. If a new hire comes through the normal process, we're not just appointing them, putting them in a position, they come through the. They come through the interviewing process, they go through everything, and they're selected as a top candidate. He didn't believe that we should have something in our policy without.
Hmm, so I would propose like with. A, we should say, since we are a fairly small organization, no city employee may supervise. Um, a spouse, family member or relative. There.
And we have a problem.
What's that? That would work. Yeah. There you go.
Okay, remove A.
I would perfect, correct it. This.
All we could do is we said before, we could suspend it as necessary. But. Right now, we're pretty small. Looking. This policy as we go. So that's, that's what the attorney said, you know, we could suspend any, any policy until we did. We had what candidates said, let's suspend that for this time. And, uh.
But then we're taking it case by case basis. Case by case, so I'll say we're all in on it. It's like we either allow employees to have, we either allow relatives to. To apply an interview or we don't. And I think we're saying we will because we want the best candidates to apply. It doesn't matter if they're. A relative or not.
Then I think if we do that. Then we need to make sure that. We state something in here that upon hire. No city employee will. Be hired by any member. Of their family.
Well, that's a beast.
Oh.
Yeah.
City employee, I'll take part.
City and hire are kind of promoting.
There we go.
Damn, we're gonna be. Just letting you. So I, I mean, I, we can leave it in and see if we recruit it, but. I mean.
Yeah, and maybe just add a, um. Council has the ability to supersede. This direction.
Yeah.
No, it's there. Right.
Yeah.
Are you saying on A?
On A, yeah.
The thing B and C still stand.
B and C still stand.
And I think that's one of the things that, that you put that in there and then you.
Then you have it, it's there and.
Sure.
Well.
Did you land yourself on people applying for the position?
No, don't.
No, just says you can't, you can't apply to the same department, spouse, family or member or relative. Other than. Per city council direction.
Hmm. I think we have to have another C as well, but.
So we would talk to this city council before we'd allow them to apply? As well, before that point.
People's time if it's on. No, before their point.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
Maybe, it's. Maybe, yes, uh, uh, an applicant has been assessed this prior to, so that would maybe just be a verbal. From the city administrator to somebody who applies that is a relative, a designated spouse, family. A relative that. We have this policy, but council can supersede it. You, you decide whether you want to go any further. I mean, that to me is. Again, we are a small city. We don't get. Uh, an abundance of applications for jobs.
Right.
And we did have to look at hiring the best person. For the job.
Well, I'm just throwing this out there. Family member or relative. So cousins, fine, son, daughter, like open outlet, like. Do we want a husband and a wife working together? Do they?
Do they, yeah.
I'm just saying.
Never gonna do that.
So that feels like. It's getting close. So. I mean, you put family member or relative, well, it's like, well, I got a cousin to apply. Who cares?
Yeah.
But. Counsel, you can put in the clause of the council and. Go from there. Like that feels like you're. Potentially playing with. Couple of stick matches. At potential.
So put the verbiage. What would the verbiage be without answer? That's all. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
I would just say that council has the, um. Ability, yeah, council has the ability to supersede this direction.
I, I do.
Has the right.
Because I think it should be.
Has the right. Has the, has the right to supersede.
But two. That's from Rollers point.
What level of relative will be done?
Well, I mean, that's the, that's the clarity, right? It's like, well, is it a son, a daughter, a cousin? Or a niece or nephew? It's like. I, that to me has very. You know, a son, daughter might be getting into that, but like cousins, niece, nephew, I don't care less than like if someone says, uh. We're gonna hire Scott's wife and they're gonna work at the same department together. I mean, my spidey sense would be like, bar one, fire. That sounds like we're asking for trouble.
So are you saying?
So spouse is up here.
I know. Uh, my only point is. We can leave this because it's the council has the right to supersede or restrict this. In practicality, if you're asking me when we're going through candidates list, if. Natalie's husband or Scott's wife applied to a spot that they're gonna be in the office all day with them, I would be like. I'm all, I'm not signing up for that. If they called, if they said. My nephew is seeing that for it, I'd be like, don't care. That's kind of the two broken ends I got.
Mm-hmm, that's.
I agree.
It's just funny to think of my wife.
Yeah, I mean, I've been working. Already here for nine.
Nah, nah, she wants summer work, you know, season will help drive a truck or something.
Right.
She's got to take on to get to CDL. She couldn't be her default.
Or two, you're gonna be randomly selected. But that, I mean, that's just kind of the bookends I. But that, I mean, that's just kind of the broken ends I got.
Alright, next item. If there's nothing in question, fourth, next I will move in section five.
Um, I have one question section. Two, four, one, third paragraph, most of the data is considered private information, not revealed without employee's permission. Can we define what that most is or what isn't? And that's again, very subjective. We've got these six things about, but most is private, we don't know which.
Mr. Mayor.
How's my radio?
Can we just refer to data practice? Data practice determines what information is considered private. Hence what can be revealed. Cause that's what determines that this data practice.
Okay, my main, so I just wanted to make sure we can find where, what's defined as private.
I will add data practice.
Mr. Mayor.
How's that right?
Why does it matter? If it's the employee's responsibility to promptly notify the city administrator, it doesn't mean when there's a change in any font. If none of that is relevant to their employment, why do they need to promptly notify? Because if they're not gonna change their benefits, what does it matter if they got married or whatnot? They're not gonna change their beneficiary.
Well, the name, I can see the mailing address, um, telephone numbers, emergency contact information, those would all be pertinent.
So just.
Now, I got another cell phone and that's not the number that I'm getting off Scott. I guess then who's carrying the insurance? Because you could say, child and they don't tell you that they're gonna go on their insurance and then some event happens and they said, well, I had a kid six months ago, you knew that you should have out and I pay enroll me. Right, but then that's their fault, not the city's. I totally give that, but this spells out. Oh, but they don't have to. Maybe I'm, maybe I got divorced and I want my ex-wife to get it. But then they did, our insurance would say, single, single, married separately. I mean, it's gives. Right, but you still have a beneficiary that you don't have changing.
Mr. Mayor.
Cause my radio.
I know, and I don't know, I'm in, in, in my pension to Para, I had to have my spouse sign that he understands either he gets the money or somebody else does.
For Para, right.
Right. So, and our people are not in care, so there are some benefit places that.
But that's pension. That's not life insurance.
Well, it's got pension benefits right behind life insurance.
I understand, but they're two totally different things.
You know, I, I, I don't see a problem, but I also see the, the benefit whether, you know, you can say it's their problem, they don't change beneficiaries. I do know when you need life insurance, it's generally something sudden. And it can get real confusing for the, the employer if this is all messed up. Because we, we found out that personally that it would be nice if, if somebody's company would have made sure this was cleared before they passed away. So I, I think it's not on our risk on the part of the employee to keep us informed of six pieces of key information.
Well, and just devil's advocate, so assuming they want to put a new child on the, on their, um, insurance, they aren't going to, start paying a family rate until they have a child. And then from an insurance standpoint, there's a clock that starts when they, they have a kid. So if they don't do them for the first thirty days, then all those bills are not gonna be retroactively paid. So they need to disclose that right away or say, it's to their benefit to make changes to benefit. I totally understand that. This is a, this is a clause for us to say. I see both sides. Moving on.
Section five. Two, five, two, breaks. Verbiage was just updated from what was previously in the policy to match what is in the league model policy.
Mr. Mayor. Can we go back to two, five, one? I'm trying to figure out if I'm not just reading, if I'm not reading it or not reading it correctly, but I do, wanna make sure that if people are called out, if Monday was a holiday and then they're called out in the middle of the night Wednesday and they work all the way through Thursday morning, that they are paid, they're compensated for those hours as overtime. And not just straight time because they were on a holiday or vacation day, E T O or one of the other days.
So per now then, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Per now then's policy right now, the work week starts Saturday night and ends Friday. So if, if you were to work forty hours Monday through Friday and then the snowstorm hits Saturday, hours worked on Saturday aren't gonna count towards that past. So that's the city's discretion on when the work, the seven day work week starts. Some employers have it be Sunday to Saturday night. Now then it hasn't been Saturday night to Friday night as far as what the seven day period for calculating overtime. But this, this section here is not talking about overtime. Hopefully we will get to the original section in this section.
But on that two, five, one and two, five, two, it appears that on the bottom of page seventeen, the last paragraph on two, five, two should be part of two, five, one, cause it's not really part of breaks. It's a service to public. May require a section of regular shifts. Shouldn't have any other work schedule? That paragraph. As opposed to breaks? How's my radio?
Maybe I'm just, so it says, shall consist of forty hours, Monday through Friday, except holidays. But you paid for those holidays, so that would be part of your forty hour.
Not typically. It's forty hours worked by state standards.
But this is just talking about.
A normal.
A normal.
A normal work time. Like now then doesn't have, well, you might, at some point, I guess the, uh, the recycling center doesn't work Monday through Friday.
Right.
So it, it doesn't allow other positions to have other hours, but this is saying in general, the city Monday through Friday, except for holiday.
So there's nothing about how the pay is done for those forty plus.
Correct. There is.
There is. Okay, I just, I just wanna be sure.
In general, it's Monday through Friday, I think you think. I don't know. There is the opportunity to clarify, some positions are Tuesday through Saturday to cover the recycling center, because it's just like a statement, the city wins Monday through Friday.
Mr. Mayor.
Call out. A normal work rate for full-time employees, people that work Tuesday through Saturday and not full-time. These are the hours observed by full-time employees, however, work hours may vary based on the city. Doesn't really say anything about part-time hours.
Yeah, it does, it does clarify full-time. So I think that's accurate. The normal full-time employee schedule.
Look, Mr. Mayor.
How's my radio?
To the, to, the Minister of Leader and Deputy Clerk Johnson, I've always been, those hours are these. It's a goofy payroll. It is, it, would it be a harm to benefit you and how you're processing payroll to change that from a Sunday to Saturday versus the Monday to, you know, I'm just, would that be of any benefit for you? I mean, it doesn't make any difference really to the employee.
No, it starts on Saturday and ends two weeks later on Friday.
Yeah, that's what it, okay, so a change to that is, is not something we see next season.
It doesn't affect recycling. And then Saturday's gonna be on the next week.
And that's all we was on.
I just thought it was an odd time period, then would it be easier to do when you're processing? Alright, we'll just strike that suggestion. I, I thought if it made it easier than, but if it doesn't, it doesn't, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Under third paragraph under, uh, two, five, one, all employees are subject to being called back to work and then to the declaration of emergency by the mayor. Uh, what, what would constitute an emergency that the mayor would be calling the train offensive or, are you saying that the, like, recalls the guys in the hospital in the case of the ruins?
The, uh, the actual declaration of emergency? So there is a declaration and I, I can call in the emergency three days and it's up to the council then. We end on whether to emergency continue. So significantly, it's gonna be severe weather. But that would actually be an actual declaration. Yeah, if we don't declare the emergency, then we're not gonna get FEMA reimbursement and, but that can only last up to three days. And we'll cover that. And that's one of those things that government will do, the E O P as well. And now that's a specific declaration.
For breaks, there's two proposed changes based on the league's verbiage. One is clarifying that a fifteen minute break is allowed for each four consecutive hours of work. You do not have to work in eight hour shift in order to be granted two fifteen minute breaks. For every four hours of work, you do get a fifteen minute break. So if you only work six hours, you still get one paid fifteen minute break. So just a little clarification on paid breaks. And then the lunch period as well. Just clarifies that a thirty minute unpaid lunch is provided in eight or more hours. Any questions? If we don't take our breaks, does that consider the offense to get written up or lunch? Because we eat at our desks all four of you very much right now, because we're so short-staffed.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
How's my radio?
Doesn't state that in there. That would be up to the administrator to make sure you take your breaks and your lunch away from your desk, but that's.
Is there a minister who have been encouraging to try to take your breaks?
No. Oh, yes.
Actually, we, we discussed this the other day when we were talking about the operating hours, because technically it should be eight thirty to five. But a half an hour on paid break and two fifteen minute paid breaks. And then kind of was, we don't have our time to take breaks, so we just nine to five. Well, this is saying unpaid thirty minute lunch period is provided. When an employee works eight hours consecutive, eight hours more consecutive. Employees are expected to use these breaks as intended and will not be permitted to adjust work start time, end time or lunchtime by hitting these breaks.
So what that's saying is.
I think you misunderstood, because part-time people aren't really working eight hours, so. And quite realistically, I'm verified data box almost every.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, that the encouragement is not to eat at your desk and keep working. The encouragement is to get fresh by taking a half an hour break in the middle. Use, use the restroom, you know, take a wash, it's unbeaten. And get away from the computer screen.
Break the vacuum to the mailbox and give them room. Hey, I totally understand where, where we're trying to get to with that, but I've been managing the best you can and trying to get to work.
Next one is section six, two, six, one, outside employment. So the first sentence highlighted is part of now then's policy today. It's those two sentences. The league has, um, much more detail. So if the league's verbiage is adopted, then the two sentences in now then's policy right now would become redundant. Um, but they are there today. I tried to call out, the league really just dives into much more detail of, um, outside employment. Yeah, this, we didn't get this far. So this is new material.
Okay, I thought I had a list of them added.
This is exactly that this video. Page eighteen.
So tonight, I guess.
Yeah, just having here, it's not adding in the bind.
So replace the two existing paragraphs with the highlighted area from the league? Would be the question. First paragraph with city.
Yes, it's just the second paragraph, just those two, like city time facilities, equipment may not be used for outside employment violation. Includes dismissal. That's what now then has today. The league is just more robust about what counts as using unacceptable outside.
So you would keep the third paragraph? Full-time and benefits eligible, eligible employees? Must receive prior written approval from the city administrator prior to engaging in any outside employment. City, mayor, state shall confirm with city council if appropriate. So what would, what would be determined if appropriate?
My understanding is if it doesn't fall into, it doesn't violate any of these specific or specific clarifications.
Jason, you gonna say something? I guess I'm just questioning why, let's see, if somebody's, somebody works for the city and they choose to take a second job or do something else, do we care? I have. Let's say I have to report, I have employment to my employer. And it's, it's not at all related to the field that I'm in. And it's literally, hey, boss, do you have any problem if I'm doing X, Y or Z? No, okay. Just make sure it doesn't interfere with your work. Just make sure it doesn't interfere with your work.
Mr. Mayor.
I had to do that for all three employers that I've had.
How's my rating?
But I had to do the same thing, I have a form, I had to fill out, and it was not related to my employment whatsoever. But I had to.
I think it's more just, it should be, it's more of a courtesy, hey, by the way, I'm doing this. And especially if they're in any remote possibility of a conflict. Yeah, I mean, I can see if it's conflict of interest, but I'm just trying to understand, but, but it can, it can stay.
It could be more, could be more, sorry.
So there goes my cheese for moments.
It could be something more to the line of, um, I don't know, is, this is from the league is what you're saying, this part is from the league? So.
It's not a conflict of interest and they live it on their own time. Why would, why would we?
Yeah, this was written approval, and it's pretty formal, so we've got.
Yeah, that's, that's not new, yeah.
I, I was scared, I, I mean, that's where we get in trouble, right? We have these policies, we don't follow, follow them, and it's like, well, why are you choosing to follow the drug and alcohol policy, but you're not choosing to follow this policy? And I honestly could see getting away from it, really.
Well, the, the, where it might be a big deal is when you change, you know, change supervisor, change administrator, change something there, you don't have any created, clear employees, maybe been there decades and this was signed off a long time ago, but you know, we've had four or five people since then, they, they wouldn't know that, but they have a record of it, so. Again, we're, we're not doing it for the moment, or you are doing it for long term. There's a, there's a flyswatter on your somewhere.
I know, it's in my hair and in my ear. Yeah, it's just.
Okay. I'm okay with leaving that. All right.
So then remove the second paragraph.
Yep.
Oh, wait. Section seven, compensation.
Can we back up to the beginning again? Second to last whole point, an employee to work for another employer is not allowed to be basically from the city.
So if someone takes off to go anywhere other than work.
If it doesn't, we don't have six, well, it talks about taking vacation time, which is more of a P T O time, if an employee was to take vacation time away from the city and the city administrator approves vacation time, why would they not be allowed to go do anything to do? I just, I just don't know if I like that a lot of both, I'm wearing talks about sick leave.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it provides.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
My rating.
We should have updated to reflect P T O, and you can do what you want with your P T O. But issue, I think, was sick leave is that you're out on work comp.
Yeah.
Then you.
Yeah.
So that
Yeah.
Should be also um, specified, if you're on work comp, you can't, uh, you may.
Work comp would be.
Pre-injury, your injury. Yeah, or disability, yeah, work comp or disability. Which we know.
Clarify E S S T for, there are employees who have E S S T.
But then. But aren't there certain qualifying things you can use, you can't use S T, use E S S T for anything, right?
But I don't think as an employee you're allowed to ask.
See, there are restrictions on it, but you can't ask, I would agree with you for, so why do they put?
Well, you kind of, there's more than, I think, three, three days, just.
I think it's more, it's like, if you see them at their work, at another job or whatever, and they've taken sick time or E S S. Yeah, then you could probably question them, like if one of your employers said, hey, I was talking to so and so, they were at the state fair running their
food stand.
Yeah, food stand, and, um, yeah, so we talked and it's like, well, they called in sick, or, you know, then when they came into work next, it's like.
I get it from a sick time line, we don't have sick time, so if somebody are in the company.
Which they.
The S S T is.
Yeah, that's a different.
Really, do whatever they want, I think the question is if, like Mary said, if someone got injured at work in their unemployment's comp and they are.
Totally agree with you.
Or out on a disability.
That's my name. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I did change, the first work performed for others while unapproved P T O is not a violation, unless it prevents a conflict of interest. Uh, I didn't change that, so if you pre-request P T O, that's not a conflict, but, um, if you have paid workers' comp disability or E S S T, it would be, because there are employees who do have E S S T and to council on referrals, but just say I'm getting E S S T and then go over to the state fair, that would be. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We're still not allowed to ask them what they're doing, it could be a mental health day. It could be, you're not allowed to ask.
But if another employee came and said, hey, I was talking to so and so, and you knew that they took E S S T, you still.
It's not, according to the policy is we, they can.
How do they, so they tell you, these are the things you can take time off for? You have to self-regulate that, saying.
Yeah, I mean, one of those is safe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can do whatever they want, same.
Oh, they can, okay.
Well, no, there's certain things, you're saying it's used, you can use it for this. But you can't ask them, it doesn't happen.
But a mental health day would be I get great enjoyment out of working with cheese first, they don't prepare.
This is less mental strength, not like a.
What we gotta get away from is, somebody is on paid leave or some or some claim, and they're doing a like job for somebody else getting paid two S. Or doing, you know, they're, they have a back injury and we note them putting a lien offense somewhere.
Okay, so I have to then vacation or compensatory time to P T O? And then sick leave to workers' comp or disability? Section seven, two, seven, two. Administration of pay. Uh, so, so in our, our main meeting, we had said that, uh, we, there are no steps as far as pay that the city has adopted, but but we did decide that there are classifications that was used by the council, so, uh, my question was, is somebody's rate of pay tied to the classification schedule? If not, then the, the sentence, employees will be paid according to the compensation schedule should be removed.
We're not tying it to a schedule. It's tied to their duties.
Okay, so that sentence can be removed?
Yep.
Because we kept the definition in, the schedule exists, but it's not tied to pay.
Yeah.
Um. For a previous meeting, I have a note that phone reimbursement needs further discussion. The policy today reads expense reimbursement, appropriate expense for phone and travel expenses may be authorized by the city administrator in addition to regular. Would we like to revisit phone? Reads reimbursement.
I think that, that's separate from expense reimbursement, so this is reimbursement for travel and, and associated things. At the time when a phone was, when this was probably created, a phone was something you'd use intermittently, you know, companies used to give you a phone for travel. Um, there wasn't it wasn't common for everybody to have a phone, probably this was created. So it's not a reimbursement, that's, that's more structured on job responsibilities as opposed to reimbursement for expenses.
But, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ray.
It does say reimbursement for phone and travel, so it's two different things.
They do have travel plans because there is a whole section on travel reimbursement, that's in section.
Well, and how old is this? Because phone could have been long distance, I mean, it wasn't too long ago that we had long distance calls. So how long ago was this, actually, the policy actually put in completely?
Well, this part is, I mean, yeah, it used to get charged for minutes and texted. You know, if you're, if you're on a business trip, you were using a whole different set of costs. Um, so it's like, it was like a travel expense, it was like a mileage thing, you're if you're out of your, your zone, they're gonna pay the roaming fee. All the things that few of us old timers can remember.
Still, so since it's, yeah, you're right, it, it does still exist, but I mean, in a different capacity, like.
Because this is strictly talking about just pay, not policies on anything. Should phone and travel be removed from here, travel's already captured in section twelve in much greater detail? And phone could be tied to the technology policy, or when we get into city-owned computers, phones, et cetera, and then just leave this as expense reimbursement may be authorized by the city administrator in addition to regular pay.
I don't know. Yeah, so let's prove by city council, employees will not receive any amount from the city in addition to pay authorized for the positions to which they were appointed, what was the rest of it? Was there anything else in that paragraph? Probably moving it all to the.
Uh, so the, the remaining sentence will be expense reimbursement may be authorized by the city administrator in addition to regular pay.
And then do we define expense reimbursement? So we leave it over?
In, in some cases, it may be, like, if it's an international it's an international trip that somebody's going on, and they need to turn their phone on internationally, you may reimburse that, otherwise I would say no to a phone, but it could be mileage, it could be O T L, but if we're trying to make this somewhat generic.
Just wondering if it's in this paragraph is what you're asking, kind of, is that what you're?
Yes.
I'm saying, is it here or is it in?
Yeah, you can take, we need it all in that, that next section.
Highlight, highlight the next section, and then, hey, the first part, let's prove by city council, employees will not receive any amount city in addition to pay, otherwise that, that.
That's, that sums it up as well, right?
Yeah. And then in the expense reimbursement part, that's where I put this. Because there's, there's any qualifications on it, you put it there rather than just in the pay.
So we're taking cell phones down the road a little bit further?
Yeah.
So I'm there.
Uh huh.
And then.
That's fine, I just, I want to make sure that.
Yes, of, of there.
Yep.
Um, there's some, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ray.
I'm sure, so. I'm just a clarification, so the, when the guys get shoes?
Hmm.
Do, do, do they build this, does the vendor build the city, or does this employee put a reimbursement request in for the work shoes?
Where they received them before, they used to build me up to the dollar mark, and then they offered the employee, um, the public supervisor that we, um, last week, and it's the change company, so we just asked for which he used his credit card for the up to hundred and four, and then the employee stayed the rest.
And that, that obviously is covered in another section.
Section pause, yeah, I just wonder how that was. Thank you.
These next couple of paragraphs are from the league. Um. Just clarifying that employees have the right to tell anybody their salary, and they cannot be um, retaliated or disciplined in any way for jeans. Any questions or concerns about adding that section?
Somebody else? No?
No. The next is similar, it says pay will increase by the steps, we've already discussed, we don't have pay steps, so just remove this sentence and just have promotion being, if you're promoted, you could be compensated as.
Right, so in the next one, seven, uh, two, seven, four. Demotion says employee demoted to a lower job class could have their wage rate unchanged frozen until such time as a pay schedule for a lower job class reaches the wage rate at which employees was frozen. Could they also have their wage reduced?
Not for this verbiage, no, you could be demoted, but your pay would stay the same.
Okay, so is that a legal thing or just by this verbiage? Let's say, let's say somebody, somebody you know, has all this responsibility, and they said, oh, wow, I'm responsible, I want to take a lesser position. We have to keep them at that pay rate?
Legally, I don't, if they, if, if somebody goes from a supervisor and they say, you know what, I just have too much going on, I want to just be a worker, um, legally, I don't think there's any reason you have to keep their pay at supervisor rate when they're doing that job, this is just the verbiage that was here.
Right, so, so demotion or stepping back, I'd like to be able to put the language in that it could also have their wage rate reduced, men's or women's responsibilities.
And, well. Research appropriate verbiage. All right. Um. Next one that we get to is overtime. Two, seven, six. For exempt non-overtime eligible employees. There is additional verbiage that the league policy has clarifying exempt employees and how they are paid.
That's a little, so the city of Now then will only make deductions from the weekly salary exempt employee in the following situations. Almost reads backwards. Exempt employee in position to not earn vacation or personal leave or absent for day or one for personal reasons other than sickness or accident. Only make deductions. So these are all cases where you can exempt them. So these are all cases where you can exempt them. Sounds pretty terrible already.
That makes sense to everybody. Need to be the only reasons why someone, even if, cause if you're in a salary position. The expectation is you work to do the job. So this would be the only reason why you wouldn't pay them for the full week or for a full month's pay.
Any, any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Rego.
Who will determine if any of these bullet points. Are appropriate and our reductions would be appropriate, who determines that?
Good question. How many salary man, the team members do they have there?
One. Is it up to council to decide, there's a group of whether. Reduction would be appropriate. As a council, as a council member, I don't know them, I mean, I know Scott puts in a lot of hours, but I don't know any of the specifics.
So, some of these. With these bullet points, employees in positions is not earned vacation or personal leave, well, that doesn't apply here. Offset compensation, military pay doesn't apply here. Um, again, I know we're doing this for future. Employees in position earn sick leave, research, receives a short-term disability benefit or workers' compensation wage loss. And is absent for a full day due to sickness or disability. And he or she is either not yet qualified to use paid leave or has exhausted, so if all the vacation's gone, all the PTO is gone. You still need your three days before you can go on short-term disability or whatever we say is that. How many days do you have to be gone before you can start applying for short-term disability? Is a position, earns sick leave, receives a short-term disability benefit or workers' comp wage loss benefits. So they're already on short-term, but they're on reduced pay. Is that what that's saying? Employee in a position and can earn sick. Sick receives short-term disability benefit or. Compensation wage loss benefit is absent from the full day due to sickness or, so he's.
Scott breaks his leg, he's out of vacation, he's gotta have. He's gotta have, like, I think it's just twenty-four hours before he can claim short-term disability per some policy. I don't know what the days are, but it's typically like three days. So if he's cash all his vacation, cash all of his leave, he's gotta. He's gotta cover his time and he doesn't have anything to cover his time with, so we would not pay him for those. Hey, this is really, you have to, this is really to try to pin down an employee that is not performing.
Absence of a full work week, but they don't have vacation left, first or last week of employment.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Reading through this, it seems like anything that would fall on this list, a council would be aware of. The city administrator was on a military leave or, you know, absent.
He gets called up for all the trouble.
Well, but you'll know about that, so I mean, it, it seems like these are.
It sounds like these are extreme cases where the, the vacation, the PTO is all used up and there's another extreme event.
Yeah, and I, I definitely read it differently than you council member others. This to me is like legally saying you cannot deduct a salaried employee's pay ever unless.
Unless.
Unless, so to me, it was more of a protection, like. They get their pay unless one of these circumstances.
And then these, these are pretty extreme, but the military one is not, right? I mean, the military, someone's on act, goes on active duty. I mean, we compensate the difference between their military pay and what they work, pay and what their work pay is, right?
Yeah, so these would be the only allowable deductions.
But if it gets to, you got problems.
And then the other one, jury duty or attendance as a witness. We, we cover them, but they, they had any months they received as jury or witness. Alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Just sounds a little confusing, but it's, it's making it hard, yes.
But I would, because, like, I would like to ask if administrator later can take a look at this to see if he has any concerns on it. And get back to us before the next meeting on this, just, I just wanna hear his concerns. Unless he can leave, have them now, you know, state them now. Because the. Sixth bullet point down.
When is the position that friend, Amy is absent for personal, personal reasons. If they was not then well served and denied, if he's exhausted, employer specifically requesting unpaid leave.
So, the, so the first circle. The city administrator doesn't request days off from us, he takes them as he feels.
Well, but I think we do need to, he, he has requested, he's got, he fills out vacation request.
Okay, I've never seen a vacation.
Yeah, and we should have that go to the council, that's something.
Sees them now.
In the past, I've signed off on them, and I realize they should be signed up by the council.
Should go to all councils. But when you have something that's, if something comes up quick. How does that, how does that happen?
Well, we've got a personnel, um, committee now, so we'd go, we'd go to both personnel committee members then, if it was a quick thing, like. He finds out tomorrow, he gives me a call, hey, Shane, can you come in the office and sign this? Hey, Mayor, can you come in the office and say this, and we are apprised of the situation, would council be?
I would, I would think, let's say something happens tomorrow, Scott needs a day off, I need the rest of the week off. He puts in the vacation request and it comes up, cause the pay cycles every two weeks. It's still been made to council within a reasonable amount of time. But it tracks that, cause it's one of the things we've had in, in previous situations where. Because the council wasn't tracking that, we, we had excessive. Vacation accumulating that we didn't know about.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, there is another section that's specifically added that talks about leave for exempt employees that does address. Taking personal time off, that's the next section. Um, so I really read this section that we're discussing now as just protection of a salaried employee. To have an employer not be able to, like, the salary is the salary. And unless you have extenuating circumstances, you get your salary, that's.
Yeah, I think.
It does go on to say, like, you may not make deductions for any other reason, if you improperly deduct them, here's. What happens, so I think this is just.
I think that, that those three circles you're talking about, Councilor Rego. There's no more vacation, paid leave is exhausted. Or they request to take it unpaid. Um, or the other one. It, it's oddly, paid leave has not been requested or has been denied, it's clear, if, if it's requested and denied, then they take it off. That would be clear, if it wasn't requested, I don't, I don't understand, that would be, other than it says. It tells you to take it off, and you took off, and we never knew about it, and it's on out. So we're not paying for that, but, but again, I think that's, I think Jenny is right, that this is more protection than. I'm gonna get it this way.
So if I have a sick child and I didn't request it in advance, if someone was due there, then it is not.
I, I think this doesn't say that, it's saying that if you're taking a day off. For personal reasons, you can put in time, but you wouldn't necessarily know that a day ahead of time. That's what I'm just saying, that you would still put in for it. But it wouldn't be pre-approved, as opposed to, you're taking a week off in October, you'd, you'd request it. Like, you know, like you did this summer for your vacations. But if it's, if it's something that happens on short notice, you can still just put in a day for it, but it wouldn't be pre-approved.
Mr. Mayor, if we can go on to the next one, I think that would clear up some of the questions. Again, let, just for the sake of argument, let's view that as protection from reducing pay. And then this next section is clarifying use of leave for exempt employees. I mean, so this, this just goes into exempt employees use paid leave when on personal basis, the office for four hours or more on a given day. Absences of less than four hours or more do not require paid leave as it's presumed staff works above and beyond their normal hours. So this is very different than a normal full-time employee, if a full-time employee is away for four hours, they would be required for this policy. To put in time away, so this is just kind of clarifying because your salary, because. That salary cannot be reduced except for very specific reasons. This is clarifying, well, there still has to be, these are the, these are the rules for. A salaried employee. So, it's really stating if you're going to be away for a whole day, that's when PTO comes into play. It doesn't clarify if it has to be fully approved in advance or not, but if you are away for more than four hours. Then that's when your PTO. Yeah, yeah, log it as PTO that comes off of your PTO count.
And I like the. Third paragraph, fourth paragraph, it's a performance issue, that's a problem.
Which one were you saying, Jason?
I just, you stand down, it's like, if one of the above employees is regularly absent under this policy. And has found their success in time with the work, it's not justified, the situation's gonna be handled as a performance issue.
In the paragraph before that. Exempt employees must communicate his last sentence, exempt employees must communicate their absence to the city administrator or his or her designated. Or in this case, since we just had the warrant exempt, it has to be reported to the city council.
Would you, city council?
Yeah, if you want the.
Or your personnel.
Personnel. I would say city council, cause, cause again, the personnel committee doesn't authorize. Their absence in city, they, they should come through like a.
So the expectation, Scott's gonna, it's all like, that's it, so it's gonna be gone.
No, I would say that if there's a vacation request coming up, that it's gonna come to the council. As part of our council meeting. And if it's short-term, it'll come up afterwards, I took off Tuesday for a sick day or car repair or whatever it was.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Councilor Rego.
So. You know, sometimes you know you're gonna take. Two weeks and, and go out of town with your family, so you know now, we're gonna take off through and sick business. And give that information to us ahead of time, but if after tomorrow meeting. Our exempt employee gets an opportunity to go someplace for a week. He's taking a risk of going on that week, taking that week. Prior to our next council meeting where we could say, no, we're not gonna approve it, so I. I mean, I don't see that happening, but I, I just.
It just says must communicate, it isn't saying they must get permission. It's just that, if you decide to take three days off, we should know about it. And it's nice to know, I mean, obviously, we, in business, you always say, tell us in advance you're taking planned vacation. If you're taking sick days or emergency days off, it was obviously our plan.
So, so.
It's communicating to the council.
Okay, that's what I'm.
I'm fine with communicate, not approval.
Me too.
Because, like, all, all of us have a, all of us have someone we report to, right? It's like, we said that we, they have a workday calendar that you just put your time in. So, but it's not for.
Yeah, it's communication. And so I would just change that last sentence to exempt employees must communicate their absence to the city administrator or his or her designate. Or the city council in the case of city administrator, again, so this keeps looking forward when we have more exempt reports.
So knowing the leave policy now, does the previous policy make more sense? Those are the outside cases where it's not paid leave. But then they, they don't get paid for it because of whatever the ownership assumes is.
So, and then, so then going back to that other piece. Always, who, yeah, who determines if any of these bullet points would be. Who would determine what's the process going to be in, who is going to determine if an exempt employee. Is then going to be.
I like the next, that word says, to put on tissue, if there's being the success of time, then they can go down those paths.
So, so I, again.
Mr. Mayor.
So, so let me bring up what we used to do and see if that makes sense. At any time, if you remember, when we used to sign off on time sheets. What was the council, we signed off on council time sheets. Um, which I think we should go back to, we're, you know, we'll discuss this when we talk about, uh, stipends. But I think stipends should be approved by the council, and the council should sign off on those. And, and in the case of, we used to sign off on the clerk treasurer's time sheet. When we got away from that is when we got into trouble with comp time and vacation, because we didn't realize vacations weren't being taken and comp time was. And we didn't see it until it was too late. And so we used to sign off on the time sheet, now we've got Scott doing that for the, the hourly employees. But I think probably just for. Vacations and stuff, the council should be signing off on those rather than individual member, and the council should be signing off on. Council pay, whether it's stipends or, right now, we, we haven't changed it that if. You miss a meeting, you still get paid for it, so there's not much to sign off on. I think the stipends are important for the council to sign off on. So we, if we just have that saying, here's something that each month we sign off on, and if there's. Vacation being planned, it's, a vacation request comes into the council. If vacation days or PTO days were taken, it's just notify the council from the regular meeting, so it's not extra work. But then the council's being responsible for, to that point, who determines this? If, if there's some case where one of these might fall in, that'd be up to the council. I just don't see these things applying, because I don't see the same.
I don't see.
You know, the only time we're not going to pay is if, you know, Scott uses up all of his vacation. And then something else continues to happen, then we have to go back and redo this list. But I don't see this being a problem, but who would determine it, it would be the council.
Right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilor Rego.
I just don't wanna get to a point where somebody's making this determination and council's not aware of it. And then it becomes an issue, so as long as anything of these bullet points has to be brought to council. For them to, to, to be, to be mandated, you know, I can't think of the word anymore. But if, for us to use these against an exempt employee, that is a council decision, it is not a single or a committee. Decision to do.
If we were a larger city and we had each our department.
They would.
Right, but right now, because of who we are, that sort of responsibilities, that is a council decision, that's why I say. The council should be signing off on vacation, the council should be signing off on stipend, because that is our. Our responsibility.
For vacation for your exempt employee or all vacation time?
Exempt.
Exempt.
The, the, the expectation is that you're monitoring the workload and. And so, and in the same way. We're not signing off on timesheets like we used to. We used to get timesheets every. Council meeting for all staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Genevieve.
With the thought of looking forward to an expanded city, would it make sense to say deductions? From an exempt employee's pay must be approved by the city administrator. Or if the deduction is from the city administrator's pay by the council? Because in a future state where there are several exempt employees, does the council need to approve? A deduction for. Somebody else, or could the city administrator approve from the city administrator down and then the council approves?
I think that's reasonable.
It didn't, then it would be the city, entire city.
Yeah, in the instance of. City administrators pay, but future state, the city administration.
And as long as your city administrator wants to take a day off. As before a council meeting, you're just going to be looking at email, sorry, whatever.
Just wanna, I just say, yeah, just a vacation request. Or PTO request, yeah.
On the document? Now, that's, that's on.
You're communicating on, on a PTO request, because I, I don't think it's a good idea to be. The council can't be taking actions on emails, so you just include in the packet. Future vacation request or here's a PTO day I took.
And I thought, you just said if I was going to take out for short notice, all you needed was to be informed, it wasn't going to be approved, it was going to be. Informational purposes only.
I, I think that, we'll let you.
I'm gone Friday, by the way.
I think the, the communication, the best form is just keep it on the same form, so it goes back to the end, we say. You got X number of weeks vacation, here's, here's where they all fell. We don't have to go back searching through emails, so if you took a day or you're taking days, put it on the same form.
So, Mr. Mayor. Am I, am I, Scott, I knew I asked you that, so. Today's Monday. Thursday morning. You have, um, your car blows up and you gotta bring it in, I gotta take a whole day, so Thursday morning. You send us an email and then you put that on a form that designates, I'm taking a PTO day today. And then that gets put on a, on a form somewhere that's kept. So that we're tracking it, you're not looking to send us a form.
No.
In an email.
No. I, I like where you put, send an email, I'm not gonna be here, probably because I'm getting my car work done. And then fill out the form, so there's a.
There's a paper document.
Paper trash.
And then that comes over to the next council meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we, we need to get this reason, because we don't need to know this. Yeah, I'll be out of the office today, thank you. Natalie's got it.
Well, that's right, she's done.
So I would be, I mean, I'll be out of the office, just.
The next month, the law law document is a council meeting.
Yeah. Whatever you're going to know, whatever your normal. PTO request, request is.
It's no different than Natalie doing that with you, so whatever she does to you then.
And that is currently what we have done. That's the mayor's sign on. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
The page is eight twenty four, would you like to continue?
I think we're, we're at the end of the twenty-two pages we got here, so.
Yeah.
That will make sense to. To close there. And then you're going to do the same thing on the next new section, to get all the.
Yes.
New requirements, the leave stuff in it.
All of tonight's decisions, comments will be removed, when we discuss adding additional verbiage, bringing out words that will be made. Captured, but then the next time will be sections. Eight through. Twelve potentially.
Mr. Mayor. Could I go back to page twelve, two dash, three dash, two? I'm sorry.
Right, that was the first one.
We were so close. Um, two dash, three dash, two. And it's the second paragraph. The last sentence. Unsolicited applications will not be kept on file, I remember we had this conversation. I believe we should keep applications on file. Um, if somebody comes in, we may not be hiring right now. But maybe they are the candidate for a public works position. Or a driver in the winter, but it's spring, we don't need them now, that we would keep those on file. I think there was the question of. The data practice part of it, but I, I think, I think we should keep them on file. Um, and so today, and I will say this. In a Facebook page, um, I was asked about, well, I don't see any other. Posted other than, um, backup election gifts. And I said, at this time, we are not applying, because these are temporary shortages. Or we're not accepting applications for these positions, because they're temporary shortages, but. People can always submit an application to the city and it would be kept on file, so it.
We do.
We do, okay, so.
And I think this was also about, remember when I shared with you that I got an email kind of all of the blue for the fire chief position?
Yeah.
And we kind of discussed, what do we kind of do with that? We kept it on file.
Yeah, you know, I mean, if it's not a full application, if they're just asking you a question, well, yes or no.
Right.
If they're putting in an application, I think it would be smart if we held them, because who knows? What two weeks can bring and whether there's other quality candidates in there.
Yeah, the council, and I just drop those in, and if we have some need for something, I can look at them, and maybe they're interested, maybe not.
Just scratch the.
Just grab, just grab the. Yeah. You, sorry, can you move the entire segment?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate. Consideration for going to the first page.
Alright.
Are we gonna, are we gonna plan another day for the night's policy meeting? What?
Now we have the next.
Will be ready. When you guys are ready to meet, I will try to get everything out. A week beforehand, it'll be the same concept. We will probably need to reprint everything up until. What we do, just because we're making some small changes here. Um, but otherwise, it's just gonna be the policy. As a whole, um, most likely with Labor Day and everything coming out, I would think it would be. First, all week of September will be the same.
And wasn't the thirteenth of September, we have LMC, right? What is the thirteenth then?
I know, but I'm thinking that there's something on that there. I did it right now, dang it. Window. So, any time as long as I have a man notice, have to be eleven.
You are available in eleven, are you or not?
I would be available. I have a. Shift on my eleven. I'll put the twelve.
Oh, yeah. Good.
The twelve, we're already busy.
Yeah.
The six, six through eight is the LMC City Council Act.
That's eighteen.
Probably because we threw a bunch of different dates on.
Okay, so twelve, September, September twelve, six to eight.
Okay, so we would just ask. Mister or waiter that, because well, Shani and I will be here, that staff could help take down the farmer's market. If she can, you know, but they might do a little bit.
Oh, that there, yeah.
Yeah. I know you have mine. We should.
No problem.
So we're doing it on the twelve? So.
Well, that's what we just, I don't know, I heard for sure.
Start at six? Boom. It's locked in. Got it.
And Genevieve, do we have a document that showed everything that we've tracked so far that's been tentatively approved or whatever you wanna call it? From the beginning of doing personnel policy of killing.
Uh, everything in phase one was captured as one, phase one.
But do we have a document, is it all documented where somebody can actually sit down and take a look at it?
Well, phase one is documented in and of itself, I haven't been adding any of these changes to that.
So where do I find phase one, final then?
Uh, it was approved in a council meeting. I can go back then.
And that we were doing all this to the end, and we were getting one final approval once every. I would have got that pretty good council meeting.
It was presented to a council meeting to approve phase one of the personnel policy. And it was voted on.
Phase one, voted on, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember about when that was then.
It's more March, sixty day.
Yes.
An approval of phase one, but not an approval of the full personnel policy, but.
Yeah, I didn't want to see those documents, because I thought the council, one of them had conversations that. Once personnel policy done, we'll come back for kind of approval to hold. Well, after we get to.
Okay.
Yeah, Bob. Yeah, we're just, we're saying, we're not, we're not running back through phase one all the time. We decided it is so.
I just was looking today for it, so I could just kind of level seven, what we've all been through already, what we still have to go. And I've been able to track that document, so I'm just curious.